I always go by the network clock.
Good morning, Commissioners. Welcome, and over to you Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session for Tuesday, May tenth. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, and along me today is Commissioner Roy Rogers, Commissioner Nafisa Phi, Commissioner Pam Treese, and Commissioner Jerry Willey. First item on the agenda is Board and Leadership Communication. Before we finish this section, we will talk about a draft statement that is before us for consideration. Who would like to go first this morning? It's been so long since a Budget Committee meeting last night. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Treese.
I will be relatively brief. My week was a fairly light week, but lots of budget work as well. So I appreciated the fact that you've been working hard to schedule us so that we can attend to the budget-related issues. I had a discussion with the Five Oaks Museum. Thank you, Commissioner Phi, for helping me through that process. And the purpose of the discussion was around the John Quincy Adams Young House. So I've done gathering information. I'll be meeting with the John Quincy Adams Young people next week. So that's moving forward. And I also participated in the Government Relations Manager interviews on Friday, and I'm not sure if there's going to be an update on that. But nonetheless, I participated in that. This upcoming meet, I have budget meetings, just like everybody else does. I have a Central Cultural Meeting and the Impact Coordinating Meeting, which is the group that meets to determine what the agenda is going to be. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Treese. Sorry to be off camera. Spring allergies have taken hold in my sinuses. Who would like to go next? Commissioner Rogers, I see you're unmuted. What's up?
Here, I'll go really quickly, too. I have to leave this meeting about ten fifteen, ten twenty. My wife is having some sciatic nerve issues. The doctors wanted to rush her in and get some pain relief for her, so I've got to take her there. I have had so many constituent meetings, I don't even want to name them all. But there's been a lot, budget meeting. Tanya went fairly well last night. Fairly well means that she didn't bring us buckets of money, and we were trying to decide where to spend it. But I understand the challenge. That was the job. I understand the challenges. You're certainly living up to those. So I will stop with that much.
Anyone else?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I guess not.
I've got one more thing I need to grab real quick, and so you go ahead, and then I'll do my thing.
Okay. I'll be very quick. Commissioner Rogers, I'm sorry to hear about your wife. I hope everything goes well. I hear that's very painful. My week last week, I had a meeting with the Preschool for All folks, with Olga, Bridget, Opti, and Jawad. We talked a lot about the importance of Preschool for All program. And then one of the interesting conversations we also had was, you know, what the path could look like to get this on the ballot. So that was a really good conversation. I had a lot of internal meetings last week. And then also, we did the budget meeting for Clean Water Services last week. So yay, Diane, congratulations on getting your budget passed for next year. That was a really good conversation and good meeting. And I had the Center for Climate Integrity reached out. It's a nonprofit organization that empowers elected officials in their communities with knowledge and tools. And they were wondering if I could join their Leaders for Climate Accountability Coalition, which is a public officials who are fighting for our constituents and families that are being threatened by climate change. So that was a really good conversation. I'm obviously doing a lot of internal reflections to figure out what my capacity is in terms of if I may be able to join for their Climate Accountability Leadership Program. And that concludes my update. And then we had our Washington County Budget, First Budget Meeting last night. That went really well.
Okay, thank you. I'll jump in here. So I've got a number of announcements. I think a couple of them next weekend or in ten days, a week from this next weekend, is the Air Show. The Air Show is back in Hillsborough. This is a pretty special air show because it has all female performers, both military and civilian. They've got some great aircraft, and they've got some great activities. The show is, of course, Friday. There's a Friday night show with fireworks. And then Saturday and Sunday shows from ten o'clock to about four o'clock. And in addition, they've invited, I don't say we, they've invited about 400 high school students to come on the field and meet the performers and be introduced to the aviation industry. And so looking forward to, of course, promoting that. And that's in conjunction with their Aviation School for Workforce Development, certainly educating kids from an early age to get them introduced into aviation. So again, that's May twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. A number of things cooking in the last couple of weeks. I committed several months ago to, of course, attending city council meetings for the six cities that are in my district, and I kind of wrapped that up this past week. I hit Banks, North Plains, and Hillsborough, all in the same kind of about week period of time. It's always interesting to bring information to them and entertain their questions. And I think it just is a way to, of course, communicate what the commission's doing and how it impacts their particular cities. If you're really interested, some more fun activities, we have a Sheep and Goat Way In at Saturday morning. This is all in anticipation of the fair that's coming up, of course, in July. And working with 4H, I attended the pig one with the chair a month or so ago, and that's always interesting. So we'll see. We'll see how that goes. We, of course, had the Fair Board Meeting last week and talked a lot about the fair and some of the costs, additional costs that we are incurring. Some of the pricing is double and triple of what it was last year. And so we've gotten a little bit of some budget issues that we're going to have to be dealing with on that as well. Upcoming this week is we're back to in-person meetings for COLPAC and Northwest Act. So I will be traveling to Astoria for our first meeting, and will need to be back. That's on Thursday. So we'll need to be hustling back to make our budget meeting at five o'clock. So that's a day on the road. Also, that same day on Thursday, we have the TV Highway Steering Committee. We had a pre-meeting yesterday with Nafisa and I, and so I think we're ready to do that. And Nafisa will carry the lunch on that on Thursday, as I will be driving back from Astoria. Let's see, I think that's enough. I've had constituent meetings as well, Roy. I hear what you're talking about. I might hear it a little bit different than yours, but still, we're certainly hearing a lot from our residents in our respective districts. So with that, oh yeah, Forest Trust Lands Meeting is on the thirteenth, and there's a special board meeting on the tenth, but that is only for board members of which I am not one. So I'll give you an update on that in a couple of weeks.
Excuse me. So I listened in on the Fair Board Meeting of last week, and given the discussions about the costs for the fairs and for supporting camping, I suggested to Ms. Angie and Ms. Fuller that our staff scope out what it might take to, in the future, invest in keeping some of that stock on hand, especially since some of that equipment would be useful in our emergency preparedness for a Cascadia earthquake. And that includes renting of twenty-four light towers, generators, porta-potties, and fencing. And for those who are big horse people, the Horse Fair will be on July sixth through July tenth at the Yamhill County Fairgrounds. And there was a note to the fact that the deputy position for a fair manager is now posted. On Thursday, I made comments at the Washington County Visitors Association National Travel and Tourism Event. That was a really fun event and is part of a series of all of us learning how to get back together face-to-face with one another and participate in networking events. And then lastly, I want to draw your attention to an email from Gina Nichol. Well, it's really from George Murdoch, the President of the Association of Oregon Counties via Ms. Nichol, drawing our attention to a draft, well, an approach to developing an AOC strategic plan. That is something that all Commissioners across our thirty-six counties will need to take a look at. The AOC Executive Committee met on May second to review the six proposed themes that were developed at a March fifteenth retreat. And the email summarizes what those themes are. And moving forward, these themes will be scoped out through the various AOC committees, and recommendations will be coming to each of the AOC districts in their meetings to be held before the end of September, and then onward to the AOC Annual Conference in November. So you'll all want to take a look at that, particularly as Washington County is one of the top funders, top FISA funders for that association. It is really important that we participate as a county in AOC because the thirty-six counties do help make up the state of Oregon. But in order for all of us to work together on issues of common interest, we need to be more active than we've had the bandwidth for these last three years. So that's it from me. Next up, we have the draft statement by the Washington County Board of Commissioners on the leaked Supreme Court draft opinion. Oh, and I meant to mention that I'm looking forward to participating on Saturday. I think it's Saturday, May fourteenth. I won't be able to join you, Commissioner Willey, at the 4H Sheep and Goat Way In, as instead I plan to participate in the Hands Off My Body March, which is related to this draft statement. So Commissioner Treese, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And first of all, I'd like to thank my fellow Commissioners for your thoughtful review of this letter and for the input that you all have provided. And I want to remind us all that what I'm asking for here is a signature. I'm not asking for approval. This is really for your signature on this message. I had the opportunity, very quickly, with my cellular device, to review Commissioner Willey's proposal. I haven't been able to look at the two side-by-side, but I really appreciate your look at this. I wanted to tell you that I believe we are under a timeline. And the reason that we are under a timeline is that there was a bill passed by the House that basically codifies the right to access to abortion for women throughout the country. That bill is now moving to the Senate and will be voted on tomorrow. So therein lies the urgency that I feel in getting this to our federal delegation. So that said, that gives you context for the proposal and the letter that I would encourage and ask for your signature on. I will be signing the letter personally, and I'm asking for you to join me. So that's where this is. But like I said, I just want you all to know that I know this is a difficult thing for many of us. This is at seventy-one years old. I have a history of remembering life before Roe v. Wade. I have children. I have grandchildren, and I would like a future that includes opportunities for the generations that follow me. So that is my motivation, and I encourage conversation now.
Go ahead, Commissioner Willey.
Yeah, I apologize for sending that out late. Actually, my daughter and I were working on this yesterday, and I didn't get it done because of the budget meeting last night. So I'm going to give her credit for the penmanship on this, and certainly the difference is fairly minor, but it matters not to me, Pam. I think I get the message. And so we can choose whatever. We can choose to blend them and then sign it, or whatever you want to do. But I understand the urgency. I just wanted to let you know why my letter came in so late, and I apologize for that.
That's fine. We're all under this. And Jerry, I do appreciate the input, and I appreciate the input from Cassia with her role at Virginia Garcia. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Treese, could you explain or help me understand you and Clerk Moss? So I downloaded the packet yesterday afternoon, and so I have a version of it that I was happy to sign on to. Now there's another version. Now there's a Commissioner Willey email version.
So, am I off mute? Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. If I can start at the beginning and then move through. The version that I put forward, there was some concern about whether or not some of the statements were legally accurate. I had a conversation with Ms. Angie and with Brad Anderson last night. And so there were some changes made there in relationship to whether or not it was a constitutional right. So you saw the original version, then you saw the adapted version that came out early this morning. Then after that, we got Commissioner Willey's version. So there are three versions that I'm aware of right now. And very honestly, I'm comfortable with any of those three. So I lost you, Chair Harrington, visually, so I'm not... There you are.
I think you need to give us the opportunity to catch up on these three things. If you're asking us to sign on to it, they may be perfectly reasonable, but...
Okay. I'm trying to think about how we can do that, and I'd like advice.
Can we come back to it after our next agenda topic?
That'd be great. Thank you. I didn't know how long you were looking into the future. And as I mentioned, the pressure, the urgency is around the Senate vote tomorrow. So yes, let's do that. And again, I want to thank you. I haven't heard from Commissioner Phi or Commissioner Rogers.
I'd be happy to go, or Nafisa. What would you prefer?
Go ahead, Roy.
Okay. Well, thank you, Pam, for your letter. I understand the passions around this and the interests by all parties. This is not an easy issue. Some things you don't want to really talk about, or, you know, politics, sometimes religion and abortion. They all have people on either side. And I am pleased that you're indicating this is a letter not on behalf necessarily of the Board, but by individual members, because frankly, we have folks on staff who are very pro-votion, and we have people who are very pro-life. And so I would hope that the messaging we're giving to staff is that how we individually may feel on issues does not reflect their contribution to our organization. I haven't looked at Jerry's, so I appreciate being able to look at that. I don't know that I'm going to have time. I'm going to have to get out of here about ten fifteen to take my wife to that appointment. But the first version, I'm glad that you revised it to take out, is upheld by our Constitution. There's nothing in the Constitution of Bill of Rights regarding this matter. It's an interpretation by the Supreme Court. So that's good. In the last paragraph, you reverse back to that, certainly caution you that we don't have legal issues that uphold our constitutional right. There is no constitutional right. There's an interpretation. Also, there's a sentence in there that appears to be really gender-specific, or talks about our bodies. Well, I happen to be male. Anybody knows that. That wouldn't affect my body at all, but it might affect my daughters, my granddaughters, or my wife. And so we may want to say that, or, you know, something about the women's rights or something like that. If somehow it smoothed that out, so it seems applicable to all parties. I'm going to be very candid. I'm not sure that I would sign this. And the reason is, is a very philosophic case. I'm somewhere where most Argonians are. I'm not against abortion for women's health, or for life of the mother, you know, any sort of rape, incest, and even in the first trimester, that's not my issue. But my issue is, is the Supreme Court, I don't think ever should make laws. They should only interpret laws that are on the books, so I have a problem. And to the Congress, frankly, that swings drastically. We could have a full, in January, anti-abortion Congress, that I don't think that that's right either. I would like to encourage the letter written focused on our state legislature. The only reason many states joined the Union, frankly, is because they had state rights. And one of the rights that we have as Argonians in a very small state is the right to make those kinds of decisions ourselves. Death with dignity is one, for instance. And so I would be very open to the letter to the Oregon Legislature, encourage them to uphold their rights, because if this lands back in, it's the state's rights, and that's kind of what the Supreme Court is going. I would like our state to uphold where they're at. I don't have as much faith, I guess, in a congressional body doing that. So those are my random thoughts. I appreciate that everybody has different thoughts. It's a very emotional issue. I appreciate the work that's going into this, so I'll stop with that.
Go ahead, Catherine.
I just wanted to clarify, Commissioner Rogers. In summary, you're saying that you will not be signing on to this letter. Is that correct?
In its present form, that's probably correct, yeah.
Okay. And I also was wondering, could you run by me again? The draft letter does, in the first paragraph and the later paragraph, does talk about upholding the right to our Constitution, but I thought you were mentioning it doesn't. So I didn't track that correctly.
Yeah, there's a later version that we got this morning that removed the U.S. Constitution. It just said it's...
That's not the version that Clerk Moss sent us.
Maybe I misread it. Okay, I have a problem with that language, because it's not in the U.S. Constitution. And I think if you can find that or in the Bill of Rights, I'd appreciate you showing that specific language. I think that we say it's a right that has been interpreted, granted by the Supreme Court, that's fine. But to say specifically it's in the U.S. Constitution, that's not grammatically correct, nor is it in the last paragraph.
So can I just, I understand your point. Can I ask a clarifying question of Clerk Moss and Mr. Anderson? I followed the link that is in Clerk Moss's email, and it talks about it being upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court. I'm looking at the right language, aren't I? The one that has draft in red at the top?
Yes, you are, Chair Harrington.
Okay, okay.
And I believe if I can interpret what Commissioner Rogers is referring to, is actually in the fourth paragraph on the... And Mr. Anderson, if you can help clarify. I believe he's looking at the last sentence.
That's my understanding. It's wherever it says "our constitutional right."
So I just want to make sure I'm looking at the correct updated version. That's all. I should have asked my question a little more clearly. I was trying to explain the context of... I thought I was looking at it, but then I heard Commissioner Roger, so, okay. So, since, sorry, I have the mic, Commissioner Treese. I am hundred percent comfortable with the proposed letter that was the updated letter sent by Clerk Moss this morning. So I'm perfectly happy and appreciative of signing on to this. I can see if Commissioner Willey is interested. Then, in that last paragraph, in the second line, encroachment of our individual rights to govern our bodies, we could possibly consider encroachment of individual rights governing women's bodies and destinies. Perhaps could...
With all due respect, Chair, I'm uncomfortable with that because I believe that it's our responsibility to be responsible for, no matter what gender you are. And it takes two bodies to make one body, and so that's my position on this. And being the mother of a son and two grandsons as well, I feel very, I'm very committed to that concept that this is not just a women's issue, that this is an issue for everyone. So thank you.
Yep, I'm with you a hundred percent on that. Thank you.
Excuse me, but, Chair, am I interrupting you at this point? I did get a note from Commissioner Phi that perhaps I should read the draft letter for the record. And I think that that's a good idea for those who are listening in. So thank you for that suggestion, Commissioner Phi. And with your agreement, I'd like to read it into the record. Okay? This is a statement on the leaked Supreme Court draft opinion. "We are deeply troubled and concerned by a recently released draft opinion of the Supreme Court proposing to overturn Roe v. Wade. No matter where you stand in your beliefs on the subject, the right to an abortion in most circumstances has been consistently upheld by the United States Supreme Court for almost fifty years. Since the Roe v. Wade decision of nineteen seventy-three, those opposed to abortion have sought ways to diminish the power of the law. The Hyde Amendment in nineteen eighty restricted the use of federal funds for abortion unless to save a woman's life, and later actions have opened the door for more state control in regulating and restricting access. These actions have been to the detriment of people who cannot afford the luxury of travel to more receptive states. The proposed rollback to Roe v. Wade will have an unequal impact to Americans based on their income..." to Americans based on their income and based on their race. The safety and livelihoods of many will be at risk and our underserved populations will feel the impact most acutely. If the Supreme Court moves forward with this draft opinion, it behooves us to be concerned about the encroachment of our individual rights to govern our bodies and destinies. As the public agency for the county, we encourage the US Congress to take appropriate legislative action to uphold our constitutional right and not overturn a law that has been upheld in our county, in our country for close to 50 years." And then the signatures would follow. Commissioner Phi, would you like to comment?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think the three drafts that were being mentioned, I was getting lost in which one we're putting forward. So I was like, maybe we need to read it to the records, which one it's. And it sounds like Commissioner Trese, you're okay with Commissioner Willie's amendment? So we're going to blend in or is this the final version you read now? Because you said you were okay with blending any of them.
In the beginning, I was. And Commissioner Willie, to your point, I would just like to say that I respect the changes that both Mr. Anderson and Commissioner Rogers pointed out about the Constitution and the first couple of lines. Your letter included those same, those same comments. So that's why I think I'd like to revert to this, this draft. And so to answer your question, Defisa, that's where we are. That's where I am now, and that's what I'm proposing. Commissioner Willie, do you have changes to this draft that you would like to see?
I'm not really good at changing draft letters on the fly. So I would, what I think initially what the Chair was recommending is that we hit the pause button on this and we come back to it after our only work session. And so we'd be talking about it at 10:30 or 11 o'clock this morning. So it's, we're only delaying it an hour or something. And maybe give Megan an opportunity, since I know Megan worked with you on that letter, to give Megan an opportunity to, to at least highlight what the differences are and maybe if there's a proposed change or whatever. And then we can come back and have it then. If, if that, if that doesn't work for everybody, then we'll go with your draft. So I was just trying to blend the two a little bit.
And I'm fine waiting till the end of the meeting. And I, but I did, I'm glad we have our opinions out there. I don't know that I, I don't know that I heard Commissioner Phi's full opinion, though.
Sorry, I was muted. Commissioner Trese, I'm, I'm okay hitting the pause and I'm okay with this draft that you've read. Also, I want to be clear, the draft that you read. But I'm also okay with hitting the pause and coming back to it as well and figure out if there's any changes that we need to make and to make sure that we're all on this on board. But other than that, I'm fully on board and I really appreciate you bringing this forward. And yeah, it's, it's really hard what's happening, but we're going to stand together and, and I agree with you as a mom with boys. It's not just women's issue. It's all of us. We're in this together.
And I'll just say, I have had the opportunity to, through this conversation, to review the version that Commissioner Willie has offered up in working with his daughter. And the difference is, I, it seems to me like the, the version that Commissioner Trese read is stronger. And that's one reason why I like it. And I'm willing to put my name on it because it is clear. It offers really good historical context. And we need to make sure that we're not rolling backwards, that we're going forward as a nation. So, but I'm more than happy for us to come back to this later in the agenda this morning. I just want to make sure we get it closed. That's all.
And I'm fine with that. And I, but once again, I appreciate everybody's input. I would like to say one last thing. And in response to Commissioner Rogers' comment, I am not comfortable with this only going to the state. That this, the issue here for me is a, is a national issue. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Chair Harrington, Commissioner Trese, I would suggest that Clerk Moss update the packet to include Commissioner Willie's version so that it is accessible to the public. And we can do that while we're on the next agenda item for the board and the public.
Thank you, Ms. Angie and Clerk Moss, for making sure that our community has the opportunity and for making sure that the work of the board is done in accordance with Oregon Public Meeting Laws. So with that, we'll put a pause on this subject and go to our one and only formal agenda posted topic for today's work session. And that's the affordable, oh, excuse me, leadership communication. Sorry. And Ms. Angie, I just want to say thank you again to you and your staff for putting together the, the really comprehensive information for our community on the proposed budget. It's quite an improvement over prior years. I think it'll be interesting to see how our community members take advantage of the public comment periods and the opportunity to submit their questions by email again. And we'll go from there. So thanks so much. I'll turn it over to you.
I thank you, Chair Harrington, for that recognition of the work that staff have been doing. Just to also increase transparency and also to help our community have access to the information, we will be posting on our finance budget page, the YouTube link for last night's budget meeting as well as the, the following budget meetings. And the purpose of that is sometimes attention can be grabbed when there's a public hearing. But we want to make sure that the full journey we've been on together is fully accessible to the community. So just a heads up. The board will be receiving an email this afternoon with an update on our American Rescue Plan ARPA Phase II investment planning process. Staff have been developing the planning process for our tranche two of ARPA investments. We are going to be scheduling one-on-ones with commissioners in June to review and get some input on that planning process. And then bring the framework forward to the board in July at a work session. And then looking, targeting August for formal approval of that process. As a reminder, we are centering community and community engagement as we look to ARPA tranche two. The COVID-19 Racial Equity Advisory Work Group is in the final stage of co-selecting a consultant team for the multi-jurisdictional ARPA Community Engagement Project. The multi-jurisdictional includes Washington County, City of Hillsborough, and the city of Beaverton. Together with our city partners, who are also ARPA recipients, we are partnering with dozens of culturally specific organizations in identifying recovery priorities for populations that have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. I will be sending this information out to the board because I know that from time to time, there are elected inquiries or community inquiries on where we are with the ARPA planning process. This information will also be posted on the website to be fully transparent with the community where we are in this process. Speaking of COVID, Washington County has moved to the CDC's medium community level. This was formerly known as a risk level because case counts have increased above 200 cases per 100,000 over the last seven days. These counts are an underestimate because of self-testing. Hospitalizations are increasing as well, but still lagging far behind last year's surge numbers. Public health recommends that people should make sure they're up to date on their vaccinations, practice good hand hygiene, and please stay home if you're sick, even if it's not COVID-19. I do want to recognize our Washington County Jail. Washington County Jail recently has earned national accreditation for correctional healthcare. So huge kudos to our sheriff's office and jail team in this work. Last week, Commissioner Phi, you had raised a feasibility study request to tiny home village. Staff are working on this and will bring this back to the board in June for your consideration. And that concludes my update. Oh, I will note that the board's town hall meeting has been rescheduled for June 23rd to accommodate board schedules. I almost forgot that last date update.
I was just checking to see what day of the week that was. That's a Thursday.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners of Ms. Angie's report? Seeing none, Mr. Brad Anderson, thank you for being here for our county council.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. As you're aware, Tom Carr is out of the country right now, riding his bike in Scotland somewhere. And probably getting soaked. So anyway, I'm covering for him. He will return for your board meeting on the 17th. But we'll be probably come in late at night, might be a little jet lagged. I just returned from vacation yesterday, so I'm trying to catch up. And, but, but I can give a couple of reports. I had, I had not read the hot sheet, so I'm not sure if you've already received these reports, though. In the Polanski case, which was the issue about the referral to the voters of the flavored tobacco referral. That issue was, we got a rule in our favor, a ruling in our favor from our courts across the street recently. And so that means that we're going to count the votes. And whatever the tally is, is the tally. And so we'll see what happens with that referral. That decision could be appealed, but as you know, the ballot's already out. And people are voting.
So to be clear, that's with the Washington County Circuit Court. And if it's appealed, it would go to the Court of Appeals, question mark, or the Supreme Court?
Well, it would have to go to the Supreme Court for them to get a decision timely. And it would likely be some sort of mandamus type of action to get a quick decision. So it's highly unlikely, but you know, there are options available to anybody.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not an expert in the court system. That's why I was asking for clarification on court across the street and.
No, good point. I'm just, I've been here so long, I, I need to describe a little better what I'm referring to. We also have the Dixon versus McLaren case. And that is the challenge to the Metro Attorney's decision to reject the initiative on supportive housing services. We got, we had attempted to intervene, were unsuccessful in that. But the court in Multnomah County Circuit Court is allowing us to submit an amicus brief, which we will, which is due today, where we will support Metro's action. And the court has also allowed us to participate in oral argument, which will be May 20th. So that's the update on that particular litigation. Any questions on that case? Okay, so that's, that's your update from county council office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Ms. Taniguchi-Dennis, Clean Water Services.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning, Board of Clean Water Services. We really want to thank you for your review of the Clean Water Services proposed budget on Friday. We really appreciate the discussion and the insight and the wisdom from the Budget Committee to help guide Clean Water Services focus as we move forward into this next year. And the team is very appreciative of the time that you spent with them. The team worked on a sanitary sewer overflow on Friday night in the Wilcox neighborhood between Southwest Shoals Ferry and Southwest Shattuck Road in southwest Portland. The root cause was actually a root plug in the sewer from tree roots within a City of Portland's line that backed up into a Clean Water Services line. So it's a little unusual that we're actually upstream of them in this case, but it did cause the raw sewage overflow. Our crews did the cleanup on Friday night and they posted the signs. And we'll be following up with the City of Portland to coordinate on this. We currently have four team members that are ill with COVID at the moment that were managed.
Could I, could I ask a question on that? Thank you, thank you, Chair. Ms. Taniguchi-Dennis, will there be communication directly to the residents in that area? And the reason that's District Two, and I frequently hear about these issues. And I just want to make sure that along with signs, that there may be flyers on doors or something to that effect so that there is an awareness of, A, that the problem was addressed and B, what, what caused the problem, if you will.
Thank you. I'll follow up with the, with the team on their communication. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If I could also ask, the line that was intruded by a tree root, that if I heard you correctly, is a City of Portland line. I know we're, we all have had the opportunity to hear from you and members of your team how they do scoping of lines on a pretty regular basis. Now, I'm not familiar if you can do that on your forced main lines, you know, the ones under pressure or not. But I was wondering, does the City of Portland not check their lines in order to prevent such problems? Or, you know, what really is, I understand the, the heart of the matter. But I'm wondering if City of Portland is putting Clean Water Services in a more vulnerable position because their maintenance routine is less rigorous than Clean Water Services. Can you comment on that?
That's a really great question. And that's part of the coordination that the Clean Water Services team is going to have with the City of Portland on what was their root cleaning schedule and, and what was the events leading up to the overflow. But it certainly, it's a liability and arson on our case because the raw sewage overflow came out of our manhole. But the root cause was because of their maintenance on their sewer line. So stay tuned. This is part of our ongoing intergovernmental agreement discussions with the City of Portland and coordination. And that's why I bring it up, because this is a case where their system's impacting ours. Thank you.
Poor neighborhood.
And the neighborhood, yeah.
They've been living with this problem for years. And I would, I would think by now that the combined teams have had the opportunity to think through the vast array of scenarios. And it, I'm not sure if this is a scenario that didn't get considered or, or whatnot. And I just think that between the two, we have to put ourselves in the shoes of the neighborhood and try and do a better job.
I agree with you. Yeah, it's accountability, right?
Yeah.
The liability on their part.
Commissioner Rogers, I didn't mean to interrupt and jump in front of you. Go ahead.
Oh, that's fine. Diane, you guys have been doing great work in regard to some groundbreaking COVID analysis and potential outbreaks. And I, I don't need a bunch of information. I'm just curious. Everybody's thinking there's flyers. What, what are you? What are you seeing from your examination of of affluence throughout the district?
So with the COVID monitoring in the raw sewage, we're seeing it continually to spike. So we saw this about a week and a half before these human cases started. So really, the sewer monitoring is showing that it it's really predictive of what potentially could occur in a few weeks. So it's still spiking, so we haven't seen the top yet. Yeah, so it's something we want people to practice good care of themselves and in their families. Thank you. Mark Jockers wanted me to let the board know that this is not the neighborhood with the Fannell Creek Park that had all of those issues with the Fannell Creek pump station. But certainly, this is a neighborhood that we'll make sure that we inform them as to what happened. And it's not something that we want to see. So thank you Chair and thank you Commissioner.
Thank you for that clarification, because that is exactly the assumption that I made. Even though you described the area, my brain immediately went to to that. Wow, so we have more junction points with the city of Portland than I really kept in my head. Okay, wow, I better, I better ask for a map. Any other questions for our Clean Water Services CEO? I'm wondering. Commissioner Trace.
I may have taken Diane off of her path. I think, I don't think she was done reporting. So I just want to make sure that I I appreciate the interruption and make sure she's finished.
Yes, I was just finishing that we have four team members that are sick and and we are enhancing our work with the team to protect their personal health and the health of the team. So thank you.
Which takes me back to the topic of COVID. I'm certainly seeing more in the news about different variants. And I think at the national level, they've raised a concern that this fall could be quite troublesome. I was wondering, Ms. Angie, might it be possible to have the public health team come into the June roundtable for just an update to help guide us, very similar to what they did in in January? That helped let us know what are those key variables to look out for? So that we have some sense of not of control, but that if if we as a community manage to to follow through on the best guidance, that it will be a less disruptive future than otherwise. Is that possible?
It is possible. And as you were mid-sentence, I already heard from our public health team that they will they are pleased to come to the roundtable and have that discussion with your board.
With the power of technology, you're able to have those those side conversations electronically in real time. Thank you. Okay. Anything else today, board members or leadership? Okay, thank you everyone. So now with without further ado, thank you Clerk Moss and to our great housing team. We'll move on to the topic of the Affordable Housing Bond and the Supportive Housing Services Joint Quarterly, or excuse me, Q3 Update. Take it away, team.
Good morning Chair Harrington. Good morning Commissioners. This is Comey Calabon, Housing Director. The team will be on shortly, Josh Kreitz, Shannon Wilson, Jess Larson, and perhaps Heather Scriber. So quick highlights of the program. Out of our portfolio of 10 affordable housing bond projects, one is complete and five are under construction. Metro is also making available additional funds to support air conditioning in in units. We're also working with Oregon Housing and Community Services to assist projects currently facing gaps due to construct continued exceptional increases in construction pricing as well as interest rate hikes. So with that, Shannon is not here. We could, I also want to provide a quick highlight that how excited we are about the work is obviously far from perfect. But we are making very significant strides, getting people housed. And you hear from our team, representing a lot of data to support some of the work that is ongoing. But we are excited to present these two reports on the Affordable Housing Bond and also the Supportive Housing Services Third Quarter Report. Shannon here?
Yeah.
With that, I'll give it to Shannon and then when she's done, Josh will come in and introduce the supportive housing and 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 go from there. Go ahead Shannon.
Great. Well, good morning, everyone. Good morning Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to be with you this morning. As Comey said, my name is Shannon Wilson, Housing Development Manager. And so I will provide the update on the Affordable Housing Bond Program. Next slide, please. And so this is an agenda of our time with you this morning. And so as I mentioned, I'll be doing the Affordable Housing Bond update and then pass it on to others in our team for the rest of the agenda. Next slide. So this slide, it just gives some very basic kind of context for the Affordable Housing Bond Program. I think your board is aware of these general components of the program. So just want to draw your attention to the unit production goal of just over 1,300 units in Washington County as a whole. And then within Washington County's implementation area, which is areas outside of Beaverton and Hillsborough primarily, that goal is 814 units. And so that's what this, the bulk of this presentation is focused on, the county's implementation area. Next slide, please. And so this slide gives a snapshot of where the county is at in the implementation area in terms of addressing that goal. And so you can see with our goal of 814 units, we have in our portfolio 813 units. And those are among 10 different projects. And then the pie chart there really breaks the projects out with regard to where they're at in the process, so their status. And so as Comey just stated, we have, there is one project that is complete in the blue, there in the orange, there are five projects under construction, which are a total of 374 units. And then we have three projects within the county starting construction or anticipated to start construction in this calendar year, which are 245 units. And then one project anticipated to begin construction in early 2023 that has 113 units. And so for this quarterly update, I wanted to highlight those projects that are in the blue and orange section. So those that are completed and then under construction. Next slide, please. So the Viewfinder project is the one that is complete. The Viewfinder is a county's Phase One Affordable Housing Bond project. It's a partnership between community development partners and the housing authority. And it was completed at the end of December 2021, or the middle of December 2021, end of the calendar year. And there on your slide, you can see a leasing update as of near the end of April. So all of the 81 units are leased and 65 of the units are occupied. And out of that total 81, 27 of the units will provide permanent supportive housing. And that is through a combination of project-based vouchers that were assigned to the project as well as additional support for 11 units for rental assistance and then support for supportive services for all of those 27 units through a collaboration with the Supportive Housing Services Program. And then the photo on the right is is a new resident checking her mail, the Viewfinder. There is a small piece in the written report about about this resident and sharing a little bit of her story. But this resident first heard about the project through our collaboration between the county and the Somali empowerment circle. Next slide, please. So the first project under construction, one to highlight is Aloha Family Housing. And this is project is sponsored by Bridge Housing and it's located on 174th Avenue in between TV Highway and Southwest Alexander in the Aloha neighborhood of unincorporated Washington County. And this project actually closed on the financing at the very end of the first quarter of 2022, literally on March, March 31st. And it began construction shortly thereafter. And so you can see the first construction photo there on the right, courtesy of a recent article in the Hillsborough Tribune. So there was some site work that's needed to prepare the the land for development. So you can see that work is underway. And then the rendering on the left is what the building is intended to look like once it is complete. And staff and our partners at Bridge are currently working on a date for a groundbreaking. And so we will notify your board as soon as that as that date has been set. Next slide, please. The next project under construction is Tigered Senior Housing. This is a project sponsored by Northwest Housing Alternatives and it's located in Tigered, immediately adjacent to the Tigered Senior Center. Here on the rendering, you can actually see that the one-story building with the American flag next to it is the is a rendering of the existing senior center. And then the building to the right is the proposed or anticipated housing to be constructed. So this project actually closed on the financing just the last week of April, so into the second quarter of 2022. And so just very recently began site work to prepare for construction. So our next quarterly update, I look forward to providing some construction photos of that site. Next slide, please. Also under construction is the Valfriate Avenue to 26 project. This is 36 units in Forest Grove. It is a partnership between DCM Communities and the Housing Authority. And there in the aerial photo, you can see some of the exterior paint on the the first of the several buildings on the site. And then in the left, you can see, get a get a sense of what the kitchens look like inside the units. And this project is anticipated to be complete the end of July, potentially, it is a couple of weeks ahead of schedule, so there is potential that would be available for moving ahead of that. But it definitely be by the end of July. Next slide, please. Also under construction is Terrace Glen. Terrace Glen is a project sponsored by a partnership between Related Northwest and the Housing Authority. It's 144 units in Tigered on Greenberg Road. It's really across the street from Washington Square Mall. This project began construction in late, late, late November 2021. And it required a lot of site work, a lot of braiding. There's some slope to the site and fill. And so you can see the photos now, they are coming, starting to come out of the ground with that first floor. And so from here, the construction will quickly go vertical and in the next photos, you'll see more additional stories added to that. Eventually, it will be a four-story building. Next slide, please. And the fifth project under construction right now, really under renovation, is the Aloha Inn. So it's a conversion of a motel at 198th and TV Highway in unincorporated Washington County in Aloha. And will be the conversion of 52 motel rooms into 54 studio apartments. And this will be the county's first all-permit supportive housing project. And so this project is currently on schedule to be complete at the end of this summer, at the end of August. And so we are definitely looking forward to that. Next slide, please. So along with all the construction updates, which can often be the the most exciting part of my part of the presentation with all the all the photos, I did want to highlight some current and upcoming program updates. So the first of those Comey did did highlight in his initial comments. So we have been working with Metro and they have proposed an amendment to our existing IGA between the county and Metro, which adds an additional $1.67 million. And those are added to the county's allocation of Affordable Housing Bond Funds. And they're specifically for, to accommodate additional costs for in-unit air conditioning for Affordable Housing Bond projects. And then the second update that Comey also highlighted is that we are working with our other funding partners on these projects, particularly Oregon Housing and Community Services, which is a state housing finance agency, really working with them and our project partners to address gaps that these projects are facing. So we have the three additional projects. So we anticipate closing and beginning construction this calendar year, as well as the one in the first quarter of 2023. And so we're working really with those four projects and the other funding partners to address the gaps that they're facing. And those are really due to ongoing escalating construction costs. And then added to that now with additional increases in interest rates as well, which the interest rates decrease the amount of debt that the projects can service over time. And then the last two updates I wanted to provide are really upcoming updates. So one is the regional site acquisition funds. And so these are funds that Metro has has ownership of. So it's an allotment of funds that they have to purchase regionally significant sites within the different implementing jurisdictions of the Affordable Housing Bond Program. And so the county's allotment of those funds is 12.9 million. And so we have been working with Metro staff to identify these sites within the county. They also adhere to the county's local implementation strategy as well as to Metro's local implementation strategy that they have specific to that regional site acquisition fund. And so we have identified a couple of sites. They're very early in negotiation, but we look forward to bringing those to your board as a timing and as those those projects hopefully, or those site acquisitions hopefully move forward. And then from there, we would RFP those sites for a developer for future development and for eventual affordable housing development. And then the final program update that I have is the, is anticipating the release of the remaining Affordable Housing Bond Funds. So within our, the county's allocation of bond funds, we originally had 116.4 million. And with those 10 projects, we did release the, and award the bulk of those funds. We do have roughly 17.4 million remaining. And so we have been working to develop a funding solicitation that would be released this summer for those remaining funds in combination with working with our partners to address the the gaps in in existing projects within that portfolio of the 10 projects. So with that, that concludes my update, the update this quarter for the Affordable Housing Bond Program. And I'm happy to turn it over to Josh Kreitz to kick off the Supportive Housing Services Program. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Shannon. Well, good morning Chair and Board. Just for the record, Josh Kreitz and the Assistant Director for the Housing Department. So I have to say, I'm really excited about the progress that's been made, not only with our Metro Bond Program, but with the Supportive Housing Services measure. And Jess and Heather are going to give you a great update here just momentarily. I thought I would just highlight before they jump into the the data and the numbers and what's been happening is the the word infrastructure. Because I think sometimes when you're standing up a massive program like this and you're trying to get to outcomes, you're trying to get to numbers, all the infrastructure that has to go into place to make that work, that that can kind of be lost. That's the internal staffing infrastructure, just enough staff in the housing department to actually do the work. That's our amazing partners and the external infrastructure that they need to build, our service providers, not just hiring staff and training staff, but building out their accounting systems or IT systems or reporting systems, making sure they're getting us good information so we can pay them timely and and get them what they need. So just a major shout out to our partners who Jess will talk about more in detail in a couple of minutes on all the work that they've been doing, billing out, billing out this rental assistance program, a brand new rental assistance program, all the infrastructure that takes to get people out there searching for housing, billing a shelter network. So it's just a lot of infrastructure billing. So I thought it was worthwhile to take a minute and to hit on that. Today's presentation will focus on outcomes and overall status report at the end of the third quarter. Plus, you're going to hear a really great report out on the inaugural Housing Access Fair that just happened a couple of weeks ago, right down the street here. So I'm gonna go ahead and just turn it over to Jess and Heather, who's going to share some of these updates with your board.
Afternoon, or sorry, good morning Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name for the record is Jess Larson. I'm the Supportive Housing Services Program Manager and pleased to be with you here again for our quarterly update. These program reports are becoming kind of established now. And so we're going to kind of bring you a brief overview of the update three months later since we saw you at the beginning of the year. And as Josh said, Heather will conclude with the very exciting work that happened recently at our Housing Access Fair, which some of you were able to attend. So first, our quarterly report includes some of these program updates that have occurred over the last three months of building out the infrastructure of the new system of care through this Supportive Housing Services measure. We've really been focusing on these Population A-focused programs. As you may recall, Population A is generally, it's a local derived, locally derived definition that generally aims our programs to serve those who've experienced long-term homelessness with disabling conditions. This is in federal programming, this is called chronic homelessness. With our local program here, it's a little bit more of a This is in federal programming. This is called chronic homelessness. With our local program here, it's a little bit more of a. Flexible definition, if you will, on chronic homelessness, but still geared. To provide those wraparound supports for folks who experience long term homelessness with disabling conditions. Plus, of course, that permanent housing. Work. And so we've really been focusing on these programs this year and over the last three months, we built out new tools to support our 18 community based organizations. Who are implementing the Housing Case Management Services Program, things like our learning community, a place where all of the new case managers. Who are doing this work can come and learn together, peer supported learning. We also rolled out a new screening tool. So everyone who's working to help their. Clients and participants get into housing can run a background check ahead of time and find out what kind of barriers they're going to face. And how to start planning to mitigate those barriers with future landlords. So they can get those housing placements successfully secured. And continued support or continued enhancements and improvements and trainings. Around our Community Connect System. As you've heard from us several times before. We've really overhauled this required coordinated entry system to make it more accessible. Widely used and shorter in. More accessible to participants. So it's not such a long. Survey and we're still continuing to improve that structure. So these are some of the. Programmatic enhancements enhancements, if you will, of our population A programs. We also, over the last quarter, worked to extend our winter shelter programs as long as possible. As you know, much of our sheltering in Washington County right now is limited to winter only shelters because we don't have yet. Permanent sites to operate year round shelters or we don't have many. So we've extended our winter shelter capacity as long as the sites could continue to host those shelter programs. Most of them are now closing, but we made them go all the way through the end of the third quarter and. Some some will continue on until the end of the fourth quarter. And this was in in order to help folks stay in stable and shelter while they were working to get those housing placements. And then last from programmatic reports. We did have make an official decision to delay the launch of our population B housing programs. You're going to hear lots more about this in coming months and reports. Because we are launching them in the new fiscal year. These are programs, housing programs that focus the case management and the housing rent assistance towards households who. Are experiencing more like an economically based experience around homelessness. They they need shorter term tools and supports to get back on track and independently stable in. In their housing and and other supports that they might need. And we had a lot of these programs funded through COVID one time dollars. And also our infrastructure was still being built. And so we were not able to launch these programs in the first year. But they are on track to launch with the new fiscal year. Next slide, please. So here is a summary, a snapshot of where we're at at the end of quarter three with our data outcomes so far. Or rather, in the third quarter, we added an additional 240 slots of supportive housing. We use that word a lot. And let me describe that briefly. What a slot is, is a reserved spot for a household who meets the criteria of that program. And it's a reserved spot with both case management and rent assistance. So we have a voucher. And we have a case manager that are all the case managers in our program have a one to 20. Caseload ratio. So one of those slots is reserved for a household who will be enrolled into that program and we added. 240 of those slots, which means we trained up that number of case managers and got them ready to start receiving those referrals. In the quarter, in the third quarter. And now we have a total of 730 slots. For those who've experienced prolonged homelessness, working to get them housed. So far, we've housed 159 households into those slots. 14% identify as black indigenous Pacific Islander or Asian and 22% identify as Latino, Latina or Latina. In the queue, working to fill those slots of supportive housing, we have 297 more households. Successfully fully enrolled and so far 211 are actually out there hunting for that apartment, working to secure that apartment. So you can see the queue of housing placement starting to build. And how we're getting towards that goal of our outcomes in housing placements for the first year. And then also we have sustained our commitment to reach our 100 bed of your. Our expanded capacity for 100 year round shelter beds. As you'll recall, we have primarily met this need through our bridge shelter programs. And as Shannon was mentioning, we're transitioning the Aloha Inn. There's no longer a bridge shelter program operating at the Aloha Inn because we're getting ready to reopen it as a full PSH building. But we were able to work with just compassion at their Tiger Shelter. To convert what has historically been just a winter shelter program to a year round shelter program. So we have sustained. That 102 year round shelter capacity expansion. In our third quarter. Next slide, please. A quick overview where we're at with our financials so far to date, or rather at the on March 31st. At the end of quarter, quarter three, we had received 8.96 million dollars towards the estimated 38.3 million dollars that we have budgeted for. And of those. Of that revenue, we have expenditure, we've expended 9.4 million has been invoiced through those invoice through those community based partners or through rent assistance. Of the 21.9 million that is allocated. And what this means is we're gonna, we're anticipating and it's it's. It's it's very valuable that we're going to have some rollover from our year one revenue collected for this program. Into year two, and that will help us to fund the reserves. Both the required reserves of this program and the best practices reserves to support potential programmatic needs. Through economic downturns or events that might happen in our in our programs. So we'll be able to fund those reserves with the rollover. We're also. Anticipating to pay off the inter fund loan that the county made to help support the launch of this program. And we'll also be able to use some of that rollover to to launch a capital fund to support some of the. Improvements needed for shelter program expansion. So those are some things we're anticipating. Being able to plan for because of how the revenue is being collected and expended in her early. Growing years. Okay, next slide, please. And so getting ready for what comes next in the new fiscal year and. Well, actually, some of these programs are underway and being launched as we speak, and some are being prepared for the to for launch in the new fiscal year. So as I mentioned, those rapid or pardon me, those population B housing programs. Have been delayed. Well, here they are ready for launch in the new fiscal year. That's the rapid rehousing and rapid resolution programs. So these are housing. Resources tool to meet the needs of specific different. Household financial circumstances. So some will be longer term with case management pair to support those. Those two to 24 month housing needs and some will be just instantaneous, one time or very short term. That's the rapid resolution program. We're also currently launching, working with community based partners to embed housing experts in our in some of our HHS programs. And they will be there to leverage the case manager capacity of maternal and child family health, for example, or our Dave's. Staff in HHS, they will work with those case managers who already have established relationships with participants who might be experiencing. A housing crisis and our housing liaisons will help those case managers navigate the best solution to connect those individuals to. Housing, housing programs or housing solutions. And we're also, we have an open request for interest right now, seeking community based partners who would be interested in launching. A workforce development pilot. This is going to focus on helping train up people who've had lived experience of homelessness or housing instability. Who want to get the tools and training and readiness for future housing jobs in our new expanded system of care. We're going to be hiring lots of housing workers, shelter workers, outreach workers in the coming years. And some of the best folks ready to do that work are people who've lived the experience of housing instability. So this workforce development pilot will train them up. And get them internships with some of our partners and then ultimately help them hopefully land new employment in our programs. We're also launching outreach programs in the new fiscal year. Over the last couple of years with one time COVID funding. We've built our outreach system from a $250,000 system with just a couple outreach workers. To a $2 million system. But that funding is expiring at the beginning of the new fiscal year. So the Supportive Housing Services Program is committed to ensuring that all those new outreach workers. Who are out there on the ground connecting folks to housing right now are going to be able to keep their jobs, keep their contracts with the county. It's actually a transition from Community Action who's been leading this work. It'll be now led by the county through SHS funding and we're going to expand and enhance upon those outreach programs. And then, as you know, we're working to support future shelter programs as soon as they become available and access centers. And similarly, permanent supportive housing programs like the Aloha Inn here, which Shannon also already covered. But we're excited to partner with that future building and support 54 individuals and or households. In securing permanent supportive housing this summer. Next slide. So you've also seen this slide. It's a reminder of those work plan goals we reviewed together. Last time we presented in April. But here they are again, aiming for our year, you know, expanding on what we've built in year one. And setting continued aspirational. But achievable goals for year two and how you can see those goals will total up for. An increased system capacity to respond to housing emergencies and also help create stable permanent housing solutions for people. So I won't go through all of those because we've we've presented to you on these before. But we are looking forward to that programmatic expansion that's anticipated to launch in the new fiscal year and begin working towards these year two goals. And towards that effort, the SHS team worked with our community based partners to co-host. The first ever Housing Access Fair. And it was a remarkable success and Heather Scriber from our team is here to. Share some information about that fair. It was a big team effort, but Heather was on the front lines with her team, helping lead the community, connect access kind of. It was like it was a pop up access center. So she'll describe those that event. And we also just want to give a shout out and thanks to Commissioner Trace and Commissioner Phi. Who were able to stop by and visit visit us during the fair. So with that, over to you, Heather. And next slide, please.
Hello, good morning Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Heather Scriber and I am the Data Analyst for the SHS Team. So as Jess was describing, our first ever Housing Access Fair was held from April 19th through April 21st. During this fair, we had the mornings reserve for networking amongst our provider agencies and to provide training. This was time was incredibly beneficial after launching so much of our work remotely. It was nice to be able to get everyone in one room and share some information and network. Then at 11, we were able to open the doors to the people who were seeking a housing resource. And walk them through our Community Connect process. So they basically went through every step that you normally would go through with coordinated entry, live in person on that day. And if we were able to, we were got them connected to a housing resource. Next slide, please. We had a total of 18 provider agencies present for the fair and of that group that included 40 housing workers, over 40 housing workers. Josh spoke earlier about our infrastructure building and I think this event really highlighted this because at one point on the first day, we asked how many people had started their job in the last year. And I would say over half, well over half raised their hand of these, you know, 40 housing workers. We also had three faith communities who were there to provide lunch and many volunteers who acted as greeters all day. Next slide, please. This event was incredibly successful. We had 225 participants attend. And many of these people waited in line for hours to get through the process. Some even had to come back the second day to finish. And approximately a quarter of the people who attended were people who had actually never engaged with our system before. All in all, I feel like this really speaks to how motivated people were to get connected to a housing resource. A large portion of the households, 86, needed a Community Connect assessment to start their process. One thing is wanting to note that many people left without a place to sleep that night. However, in total, we were able to connect to 94 households to a housing program. And we're able to start them on their journey to housing. Next train or next slide, please. Our morning trainings included the most common questions or areas of confusion that our providers have had as it relates to case management and data entry. We were also able to launch a new landlord liaison program and debrief with our providers to gather feedback for future fares. It was really clear that our providers valued this event and are looking forward to having more in the future. And with that, I'll pass it back to Jess.
Thank you, Heather. So yes, it really was a fantastic success when we expect to replicate. Again, possibly every six months or so, when new housing programs are launched and there are resources available to help connect people. To those housing programs quickly. And so more to come on the Housing Access Fair. And I think at this point, this concludes our presentation and we just have these concluding questions for you, Board. If you have any questions or direction for us on the and specifically Shannon and her team. On the Affordable Housing Bond or our team on the Supportive Housing Services Programs. And if you support the submission of the report of the SHS Quarterly Report to Metro. So I'll turn it over to you and Josh and Comey to facilitate us from here.
Well, thank you all. Thank you, team.
I'd just like to note that there are just four of us right now because Commissioner Rogers had to depart for personal matters. So now's the time where we'll take Commissioner questions for our staff. Who would like to go first? Go ahead, Commissioner Trace.
I don't have a question. I just want to say kudos and and thank you for all your hard work. As Jessica mentioned, I was at or as Jess mentioned, I was at the the event and toward the tail end. Where where everybody looked exhausted, but they were, but it was because they had done such great work and. It just has stayed with me what that the impact of that event was. So aside. And this is just one piece of all the work that you're doing as a whole and I recognize that, but I just want to say thank you and watching these. These opportunities come out of the ground, be re re remade, all of that is it's just amazing. So thank you for all your commitment and your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Trace. Commissioner Willier, Commissioner Phi, do you have anything you'd like to ask or add?
Now, to answer the two questions Jess asked. I don't have any questions. I think you did a phenomenal job of. I think you have. You have a good head on your shoulder, everyone involved in this project. So I I don't have any questions and I support. You know, the second question that you're asking, if if I support submitting this report as it is and I do. I do want to say I was able to go to the fair and Jess, you were so busy. I saw you running around. And I I'm just so grateful that Washington County, we were able to provide hope to everyone. Because people, you know, even though they walked away not having a house that night, they were very hopeful. They were very smiling. They were very grateful. They were happy to be there, happy to be there and. And I really appreciated all the work you've done and your team as well. And I know I showed up. Early in the morning setting up and stuff and I saw the hard work that went in. So Tanya, congratulations. You have a really great team working on that program. So I. Good work, Jess. I wish I could help more that day, but hopefully checking in. Was little help staff and I appreciate whoever came up with the concept of the red carpet. That was a great idea. So the idea was if you came in the day before and you stood in line, but you weren't able to be serviced. Then you were given a little note, a paper that said, come back tomorrow. And that you'll be getting the red carpet service and people didn't, you know, of course, they had to stand in line and get in, but. There was a special area they were directed to go and the law, the line was. And the law, the line was still long, but the idea, the, the perception of saying you're special today really like it not only touched my heart, but also touched them. They're, they're just, their eyes light up because I was one of the person checking in as well. So I can see how happy that made them. And it's just, it's just a great feeling to be appreciated and to say, today you're special. So I appreciate whoever created that concept for that day. So I'll turn the mic to you back to Harrington.
Commissioner Willie.
Well, yeah, I, I think there's a couple of kudos that, just a second here. I got a phone call. I gotta get rid of it. There we go. There was a couple of comments I'd like to make. First of all, Commissioners Phi and Trace, thank you for taking the time to attend that. I was not able to do that. It was, it sounds like it was a pretty impressive event. So thank you for taking a day and and, and doing that. That's really important. And Jess and Josh, thank you for this report. It's a very good thorough report. And I certainly support you communicating that to Metro. It, it's just pretty amazing where we take a program, you take a program and build it from the ground up and how fast that you're doing that. So certainly congratulations on that and thanks for your hard work. I do have one little clarifying question, and that is of course on the financial report, slide 14. How do we get 8.96 million received of the 38.3, but we spend 9.4 and of the 21.9 allocated? So I don't, I don't understand the second part of that, the the 21.9 million allocated, I guess. So I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not getting that.
Um, I'll, I'll have Jess follow up if I'm missing anything here, but we, we came in last year for an interfund loan of 12 million and, and some change. So that's what's allowing us to make those expenditures. And then on the incoming funding, I think the, the eight million and change that's come in, we expected a slower first nine months or first three quarters. And we expect to receive the remaining amounts in April, May and June, the last quarter with all the tax, with taxes and coming and people paying their taxes. That's when the majority of the funding is expected to come in.
Okay. Yeah, I, I thought for some reason, I thought we were going to receive more than 38.3, but that, so that's the total first year allocation. Is that what I'm understanding there?
That, that, that was, yeah, Metro's original kind of modeling is that we would receive 38 million. So that's what we budgeted to for the first year.
Okay. So when will we find out what the, the actual final total is? Because obviously everybody's paying their taxes and takes a while to work through the system. So when do you think we'll get that final number?
So Commissioner, the way the, the intergovernmental agreement is established is it is a direct pass through. Our proportion is directly passed through. So we will learn how much we collected in, how much we received for this program in year one at the end of year one. And so the $38 million budget is based on revenue projections, but the actuals will be known at the end of the fiscal year and we're, we're planning on year two with a with a projected revenue of a $50 million. So that's currently how the program is structured to plan and in manage our finances.
Yeah, I had 50 million in my head. And so thank you for telling me I'd, I'd fast forward to that to this year. It's actually next year. So thanks for this. And again, great job on this work.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. I have similar questions on slide 14. So thank you for that fuller explanation on, on slide 14. I also reminded myself that Metro has refined the forecasts along the way. And I have forwarded those memos to the commissioners as we have received those through the supportive housing services oversight committee. So you do have that information as well. I also have a question back on slide 13. You may have covered this before and I didn't catch it, but it seems like on this slide, there's a, I noticed what felt to me like a new vocabulary. And so I need it to be highlighted. There seems to be placed, enrolled and seeking. Could you review for me what those three operative words have meaning? Because there are statistics here, benchmarks that go along with them.
Thank you, Chair. That's an excellent question. And you've described it perfectly. So, um, enrolled, we'll start with enrolled. Those are all the individuals and households. Or rather, those are all the households that have been assessed through our community connect pro, phase one assessment, referred to one of these programs because they are eligible for these services and begun working with their new case manager. Then seeking is the next step. They've then applied for their housing voucher and they're out and they're successfully with that housing voucher, talking to landlords, looking for a new apartment. And then housing placed is the third step that happens when they fully secure that apartment. It's approved, it's inspected. They've moved in and they're, they're starting life and housing again.
So in terms of, that means that placements are the ultimate goal number to the supportive housing services. But those earlier two phases help tell the story of the level of engagement and progression towards getting to that, that goal of stable housing. Am, am I capturing that correctly?
Precisely. We are actually accountable to the program for the housing placements. The others are the story. So thank you for saying that. It's exactly right. We aren't yet reporting on retention and that will become a part of our story in coming years because that is equally as important, not just the housing placements, but ensuring people are able to successfully stay housed. We just don't, those numbers aren't yet meaningful, if you will, because people have only just begun to become housed.
Well, I really want to compliment you on sharing that phraseology and those phases for us because it's illustrative of the tremendous work that all of you have been putting in to build up this infrastructure, as Josh reminded us, to bring on the new case managers, all of the training and the level of engagement that it takes to help each of these individuals attain stable housing and have the opportunity to thrive. So job well done. My last question is on slide 16. And once again, you may have said it, but I missed it. On, in the orange section, there are two line items that say new. And I was just wondering, are they new this quarter or just new in? Anyway, could you highlight those two for, for us? Bring those to life, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Excellent question. And I didn't get into these details. So happy to revisit this. So the orange section of this chart represents the capacity of our system. Whereas the blue chart side of the chart represents the actual outcomes, placements, people put into housing. The orange side represents the capacity of the system to respond to need on an ongoing basis. So in the new, the two items that have new project based permanent supportive housing capacity and year round shelter capacity. What we're, we already have project based permanent supportive housing capacity in Washington County before the SHS measure. And so we're measuring the, the amount of growth that the SHS measure is contributing to our system. And so we are adding a new goal to add, sorry, we're adding a goal that in year two, we're going to add 100 project based permanent supportive housing units. What that means is permanent supportive housing that's co-located at a location where we can site, where there are many units and we can bring the services to that site specifically. This is what the Aloha Inn will be. And so we are already on track for 54 of those units, but we hope to secure even more over the course of the year. And that is similar with shelter, right? We had 44 year round slots for families and individual in our shelters before the SHS program. We made a commitment to add 100 in year one and we're going to add hopefully another 75 in year two.
So the mistake was mine because I remember you're defining these goals previously. My mistake was interpreting the paren new. So it's project based PSH new capacity and year round shelter new capacity. Not that those indicators are new. My mistake in understanding the, the slide presentation. So I joined my colleagues in recognizing this tremendous work. I'm just so grateful that the voters approved this, this funding measure. And that the Washington County finances did allow for that interfund loan so that the team was able to ramp up quickly in order to meet the the overwhelming crisis that we have here in Washington County as well as in our region. And it's just such a privilege to be in a situation where we can address these very real human needs and provide the opportunity for more people of our community to thrive here in Washington County. So thank you to each of you and all of the team members who are not present in this meeting today for, for doing this work. Those who are employed by Washington County as well as all the partnerships that you have developed with nonprofit agencies, community based organizations and more. Thank you. So yes, I am totally comfortable with yours submitting this report for the Affordable Housing Bond as well as for the SHS quarterly report to Metro. Thank you very much. Any last comments from the staff members on, on this topic? Hearing none, then we'll go back to the other work session topic. The draft statement for our consideration. So I believe where we left off this morning was, and in the interim, I had the opportunity, though I've misplaced my papers myself, to compare the different versions. So I, I understand we have the updated draft statement as well as a version that is different from Commissioner Willie. So Commissioner Trace, I'll leave it to you to, to facilitate the remainder of the conversation.
Thank you. My recommendation is that we go with the, with the version that Kevin Moss provided us this morning. And with all due respect to Commissioner Willie, when I look at the differences, I don't think it material materially changes the intent of the letter and I, and I, I would like to get the, the impact piece in there about the effect on our different populations. So, but I, but I, as I mentioned earlier, I truly appreciate the, the work that you did to, to, to make sure that we were on target here. So thank you. And I would ask again for, I think we know that Commissioner Rogers was not going to sign on. And I, I would like to ask for the signatures of the Chair, Commissioner Phi and Commissioner Willie on the version that Kevin Moss provided us with.
Amen.
Yes, specifically the one. Specifically the one you won, you read into the record. Yes. Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that, Pam. And yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean to confuse or make this more difficult than it is. So, so I'm, I'm good with this. Okay.
And Commissioner Phi? Great.
Yes, I'm good with that too.
I thank you for this. And Ms. Angie, I would like to recommend that we formalize this letter and I'd like to get it to the offices of Senator Merkley and Senator Wyden as soon as possible.
And that will include putting it on the Board of Commissioners, Washington County letterhead with our four digital signatures.
Yes.
And for a matter for the public and matter of the record, the Clerk Moss version updated this morning is the version that is posted to our board packet. So, and that is the same version Commissioner Trace you read before. So I just want to clarify that for the record.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for today's work session? Okay, seeing none, then we'll adjourn today's work session. Thank you, everyone. See you at the budget meeting on Thursday.